... 60,010, folks on the website. This is an official news release from the Flag School. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to every authority for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Roll focus, Mr. Duzan.
Mr. Kupka?
Here.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Here.
Mr. Masuratallah?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Sodda?
Here.
Mrs. Fazada?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
We're gonna go right into executive for a few minutes, because there's items on the agenda this evening that require that. We will not be long. Whereas Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10,4012, now therefore be resolved to board education recess, to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel and legal matters. The results of these discussions will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meetings of the Board of Education, for when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists by someone.
Sir.
Mr. Kazinsky, second.
Mr. Kupka?
Here.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Here.
Mr. Masuratallah? Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Sodda?
Here.
Mrs. Fazada?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Give the approval of minutes.
I move the approval of minutes as...
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Fazada. One favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So... Agenda E, Ms. Warren from New Jersey School Boards is out tonight, so you will not be attendance, so we wish her a speedy recovery. Correspondents?
Yes.
Sinem?
As I reported at a previous board meeting, on June 23rd, the Division of Public Contract Equal and Current Opportunity Compliance conducted a public agency review on site in business office. As a follow-up to that review, they sent us a letter on July 1st stating the items of discrepancy that needed to be rectified, and we were given a period of 30 days within which to respond. The response was sent to that office, and on August 10th, we received the following part of our notice. Dear Mr. Zarrah, please be advised that Anthony Carlos, investigator, conducted a public agency review of your agency on June 23rd, 2010, to determine if your agency has been complying with the mandate of NJSA 10:5-31 and its implementing regulations found at NJAC 17:27. The review revealed deficiencies which resulted in your agency being deemed unsatisfactory and a letter of advice that was issued on July 1st, 2010. We have reviewed the follow-up documentation that you submitted to our office and have determined that the actions taken to correct the deficiencies noted in the initial review resulted in your agency now being found satisfactory and in compliance. Should you have any questions concerning the affirmative action requirements, please feel free to contact me, Duane Floyd Supervisor, Public Agency Unit. So we are very pleased to report that we are in full compliance with the regulations.
Thank you. Superintendent Tens, your board.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been a very challenging summer, as everyone can imagine, particularly in the area of school construction and configuring space for the whole day kindergarten. Staffing is...been ongoing. We are very optimistic for federal stimulus money, but again, we haven't heard nothing official as far as what New Jersey in general and Nutley in particular can expect. We are on target regarding the non-scheduled repelling of school construction. The opening of the school will be on the date plan. There will be no delay. I also have a very, very brief statement that I want to make now. This is something that I've been thinking about for a year, and pretty much I made up my mind that the high school graduation for all pure intended was a wonderful, wonderful event. But it's my intention to retire in June of 2011. I am working on a transition plan with Board of Education that is in the best interest of the school districts, myself, and my family. It's been a wonderful 30 years. I'm ready for something different, so I thank you. I'm not gonna say anything more than that at this time, but thank you very much. And the Board has been very supportive and very gracious, and I want to thank them also. Thank you.
And I, as President, probably left to reserve my thoughts till later if it's more appropriate as we get closer to that time here, but suffice it to say, Mr. Zarrah has served in multiple capacities for this district, from teacher to athletic director, to vice principal, to principal of the high school, and then finally to the pinnacle, which is the superintendent of a district with a $60 million budget this year and overseeing 4,000 students and hundreds of staff members. And I think it's an emotional time for all of us, when someone of his caliber moves on, and we wish him the best of luck in this future, which will be still filled with educational possibilities, and we thank him for his service role and his extended time here. Board Secretary, your board.
I'd just like to follow up on some of your comments, Mr. Zarrah, made, in that the custodial and maintenance and grounds department have been working very diligently over the past two weeks in particular, and as we move closer to the school year, to ensure that everything is ready for the students and the staff when they return in September. So I'd just like to extend my appreciation to all of them for their efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Sinemus. And even though it says Mr. Nicoletta will do the buildings and grounds report, I'm actually gonna do it. You know, I've worked with Phil Nicoletti now for the last seven years, and even before that, when we were talking about school construction referendum, years and years, as I chaired an ad hoc committee for the public on construction for five years prior to my election for Board of Education, so I take the $70 million that we've asked the taxpayer to score over the last 70 years, and as we come to conclusion of the $70 million worth of work, the only thing that will probably be remaining by mid-October, when we'll have all the heating systems up and operating, the new heating systems in the elementary schools, and half of the new heating system in the high school. It's been just an incredible, incredible undertaking. You can't even imagine what it's like to manage construction, not just in one school. I don't think, by the way, I could be wrong, but I don't think I am. I don't think there's any other district in the state of New Jersey, and maybe in the country, that has constructed going on for the last seven years, including this summer, in all seven schools. Something going on in all seven schools. So it's monumental, and I think the guys have done a great job. There's been thick falls throughout these seven years of construction, but somehow we've gotten past them, and if you haven't been to every school to see what it looks like outside, to see the new windows, and see the new facades, and see the new roofs, you really must do it, because when I...I can't tell you how proud I am, having, you know, lived in this town my entire life and having driven past Washington School my whole life, especially since I attended St. Mary's School for nine years, and had to look at Washington School every day, be threatened by students in the school. But no, I'm just kidding, nobody threatened me, I don't think. But suffice it to say, you look at Washington School, if you're not proud, being a parent or just a taxpayer, knowing that your tax is going to improve that school, I mean, you're just missing a boat, you just don't get it. If you don't appreciate what's going on at Lincoln School, when we lived through bricks falling, window frames falling out, the middle school, I mean, this school, this room that we're in, you know, it's a little warm in here, I'll correct that, by the way. This room, the library, this whole facility, just incredible, just an incredible job, and there was pain every step of the way in this school. Mr. Calicchio, you know, Mr. Calicchio and I partnered up in the school to ensure that the right thing was done here, and ultimately it was, and the new gym, and the windows. And now we're working at Yankow, and the windows will start there, and Radcliffe was really a seamless, outside of a couple of windows having had some issues with, a seamless undertaking, and the same thing, you know, windows, HVAC, roofs, just did a tremendous job. Mr. Nicoletti oversaw all of this construction, which every day, as a matter of fact, last year, the president determined, Dr. Kessel determined would be better for the district, that Phil was taken out of his day-to-day duties as the director of Buildings and Grounds, and just spent 100% of his time managing the projects, and I think that was prudent, and it's paid dividends, and now Phil is actually, as we wind up, is actually doing both jobs now, since in April, he's been back in the position of director of Buildings and Grounds, and he's still managing the daily construction from...you know, I can't tell you, the other day, Mr. Zarrah and I, and Mr. Nicoletti are there every weekend, and every Saturday or Sunday, walking the projects. We're there two or three days a week, making sure that everything is moving ahead as scheduled. Spring Garden, even a week ago, there were probably 100 workers at Spring Garden ensuring that this project, which I told Mr. Kazinsky that he could draw blood from me if we don't open up that school on time, so we already opened up the school on time, but I just wanted to give you that as a general overview, now going to a little more detail on what's going on, or what we call a look ahead, as I get the schedule every week, and this is basically August 19 through 8/26, August 26, and what's gonna happen in all the schools. GPC is a contractor over at Spring Garden, and Masons are demobilizing cleanup, starting to clean up that whole school, and the perimeter of that school has been cleaned up. The inside of that school, which was scary looking a couple of weeks ago, because we were still demoing the old windows, the existing windows to accept new, and the framework, and when you do that, there's just, you know, when you take one piece of sheet rock off of your living room wall, the dust goes through the entire house, and every cabinet, every glass, every dish. Same rules apply when you're doing construction in school, and you're blowing out huge portions of masonry. The school looked like there was no way it could possibly recover and be ready for the first week of September, but as we found out at this school, with Mr. Calicchio and the high school science wing, which Joe Zarrah was there when we started that construction, right, Josh? So we've all lived it, and, I mean, it's the last week is a heart attack. This is the week where all the contractors are underdone, and all the contractors who said, "I don't think I'm gonna be able to make it on time," somehow find a way to make it on time. So you're cleaning up inside, so as they put in the new windows, get to seal the building, get to seal the classrooms, and then go in and clean it, the entire third floor is clean, the second floor is just about completed, except, I think, for the principal's office and the library, and then right after that, for the rest of the week, they're gonna be working downstairs, and I think we have two apprentices in today cleaning the basement, right, Phil?
Yes.
So we're on top of it, and there's not a day that goes by that we don't focus 100% of our efforts in making sure that that school, since every other school is pretty much wrapped up, is ready to go. Windows installed in cafeteria, basement, classrooms, painters priming the exterior, roofers flashing details, prepping the pavement, start the popsoil, spreading the finished bollards, you're seeing, gonna see, the front of the school is gonna get new grass, we're gonna clean up those trees, we're gonna have pavement in the back, we're gonna have new grass in the back as well, right, Phil?
Yes.
You know, we're finishing the sheet rock and corridors in the hall and the basements now. We still have some inspections done, or to do, but another great component of this referendum is that we became compliant with the state regulations, with the district our size, it needs two elevators at the elementary level, so we put one in in Radcliffe a couple of years ago with a grant, and we put a brand-new elevator in Spring Garden, which hopefully you guys will be able to see soon. So we're compliant, that's installed, that's operational, that's been inspected, and we're moving forward with that new elevator. So we're doing the slings wiring, we're cleaning in the stair tower, which goes to the gym and up to the second floor. The old gym at Spring Garden is now gonna become a media center slash cafeteria, so just the architect did a great job for us there in converting that room, which we were gonna leave as just a cafeteria, but now it's gonna be educational space as well, so that's really great news. They continue the HVAC work, all of that building is gonna be tightened up for the first day of school, so all the lights will be installed, all the ceiling tiles will be installed, and as per the construction schedule, from the first week of September till the middle of October, and I believe that that one we gave the contractors, just the 15th of October, to complete the HVAC work, the heating work, because that's when we have to have the heating elements operational. All of that will be completed, as promised at meeting, with all the subcontractors the other day, so they continue to move forward with that. You have painters there, you have roofers finishing up there, you have Masons still cleaning the brick, you've got spacklers there, there's just a lot, a lot, a lot of work. They're installing the cadence, which is really something to see, so, you know, as Steve Rogers said a couple of weeks ago, hopefully, a couple of weeks, once we wrap that stuff up, we're gonna be able to have tours of all these facilities, so everybody in the public has an opportunity to see what their tax dollars went towards. As far as Lincoln School, there's custodial work left, there's two floors, two rooms and a hallway that we need work in there, but that work at Lincoln School will be totally completed by Friday, 8/27. Washington School, they're cleaning up and getting ready, and that work will be totally done, cleanup will be completed by the end of this week, August 27, and also Washington, we, I believe, am I correct, the network insurance company, that we did get the authorization to proceed with the insurance work, to paint the side of that building, to do the masonry work at Washington School?
Yes.
So they sent the final quote, "I'm hoping that we can do that work before school opens, if not, it'll be done shortly thereafter," so that graffiti or whatever happened with some workers at the building, where paint on the side of the building now be cleaned up, so that facility will be totally completed all the way around the building. Radcliffe, again, same thing, same rules apply, we're cleaning that building, and that work will be done by September 2nd. The high school, we're cleaning that first floor, second floor, cafeteria, administrative offices, we're still doing HVAC work there as well, and we're wrapping up the roof work, Phil?
Yes.
So that work should be completed. You know, obviously, this facility is pretty much ready to go. There's still work being done at Yankow, obviously, as soon as the windows are complete at Spring Garden, which is very close, then we'll begin the window installation at Yankow School. HVAC work being done there, roof work being done there, facade work being done there, coatwork work being done there, you can see if you've driven by that school, that's...and once the new windows go in, that'll look like a million bucks like the other schools did. And again, Spring Garden, that's where the majority of the work was done this year. The new gym is just a spectacular facility, hopefully, everybody can get a chance to go look at the new gym, it's state-of-the-art, and it's...I'm just so proud of the way that school turned out after the issues that we had there, and if anybody has any questions later, feel free to come to the microphone and ask me any questions regarding construction, we'd be happy to continue.
Before you move on, can I make a...
Sure.
And again, I applaud this board, I certainly applaud Ken, because as you mentioned to me emphatically, you've lived it, and I appreciate that, and I certainly want to congratulate our custodial staff and maintenance people, we've been up there, all of us have been up to different schools to look at it, and to see the contractors finish one room, and then to have our custodial staff and the maintenance people jump on that room and finish it off, you know, waxing it, cleaning it, painting it if necessary, putting suspended ceilings like some of our maintenance people were doing down at Washington School, making the new, what used to be the cafeteria into now a kindergarten program, is a compliment to our facilities people, I just wanna make sure that, and I'm sure we do recognize the job they've done. My concern is, I'm still a little apprehensive, and that's just my nature, I'm sure we'll be ready to go on first day of school, or I will have to bring my...
Go with...
Or I'm gonna get a transfusion of...
I'd be happy to give it, but something tells me I'm not gonna have it. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Any committee reports of the new Buildings and Grounds report? Anyone seen none? Let's move on to the...before I move on to the hearings of the citizens, I just want, for those keeping track that have all the addendums and paperwork, I just wanna make sure that you have in your possession what we now have in our possession, which is one of the things that kept us over longer in executive than we expected. If you have the agenda and you go to Superintendent's Resolution Number 22, we're gonna make a correction there, I've been an absentee now, so that you guys have it, we're changing the date from August 30th to August 31st on that summer hours, which is one small aside of the correction, if it's important to you. On the...oh, let's stick with the Superintendent's Resolutions. An addendum for appointment of testing coordinator, that becomes super Resolution Number 24. Pointment for professional staff, becomes 25. The new P P becomes Resolution Number 26. The non-tenure teacher appointments, number 27. And the final Superintendent's Resolution Number 28, where we change the training line. On the V A changes, on Appendix D's and David were dealt up, we have Nutley Board of Education request for use of school buildings and grounds, and that appendix is gonna be amended, and for tonight, we're gonna table Number 6 and Number 20. And then the last addendum, which is V A Resolution Number 26, will be the approval of cost for the T P C. And now we're going to the hearing of citizens for resolution items. We now come to the portion of our meeting with our members of the public and address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments only, the resolutions addressing tonight's agenda. We allow 20 minutes. Did these communicate, each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within that requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all other decisions to be heard and spoken. All statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is lengthy, abusive, personally directed, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, as we've heard before, your participation will be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each time you want to address the board. Does anyone wish to speak on the resolution items?
Terry Porter, 45, empty place. Spokesperson, not a paradoxy member. I have a question, it's a little convoluted, Mr. President. It's under the Superintendent's Resolution, under Number 8, I see that a person is going out for leave of absence up until February 1st. The person is on Number 11, reported as an OT or PT personnel. My question is, is the person that's coming in for her, is that the person on Number 19, which would be approved contract occupational therapy services?
Mrs. Zarrah?
No, no.
Okay.
Mrs. Pili has been with us previous to this, and this is just a renewal of our contract for occupational therapy services.
So will there be someone to take over that particular person, or will her case load be...
I believe there will, but I can't speak to that at this moment.
Okay.
We're just approving that now.
Oh, good, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on resolution items only, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108, the Chilis Street, Nutley. This is administrative resolution number 3. The third line, I believe there's a typo there. Doesn't affect the total, I believe, but nevermind.
What's the typo?
There's a T after the 96 cents. I assume it doesn't affect the total, but you might wanna...
I'm nearly at the total, just a minute. Okay. Any other question?
Yes. Mr. President, regarding Resolution Number 22, I recall the board passing the resolution earlier in June for payment for summer hours for these personnel. Is this an additional person, an additional payment for additional services?
Sinemus?
These two names have never been on board resolution for summer hours.
Okay. You say so.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Similar question, Mr. President, to Resolution Number 20. It seems to me there have been previous board resolutions approving payment for some of these people, I can't swear all of them, but some of them sound familiar. Are these just for them to get paid, as opposed to them to get hired, or is this something new?
Just leisure now?
Mr. President, Resolutions 16, excuse me, this is administrative resolutions 16, 17, and 18 are change orders. But I know they don't have the, what I call, some of the board's magic words, they don't say it's recommended by the school's, the board's architect, the construction manager, or anything like that. I assume these were all recommended by the boards.
All these have to be signed off by all the persons before they're put on the agenda.
Okay. If you just know...
Construction manager, architecture.
I'm just saying...
Good question, good question, okay. But you're right, normally, the language is in there, and we'll make sure that it's in there next time.
And similarly, Mr. President, with all the payments to all the contractors, I again, as I've said before, my comment is, it seems to me that one of the things to state is on...
I agree with you.
Two years ago, we should set forth that the funds for these are coming out of capital accounts, not from operating accounts. We all know that, you and I, and the board and all that, but the public record won't necessarily reflect that.
Sure.
There are other people, Mr. President, that all...
There's any other questions on resolution number... Just not, just saying, answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. President. V A Resolution 22, this for lease purchasing of a bus, we only received two bids. That sounds awfully low for what could essentially be a sizable contract.
How many have happened to...
I don't know exactly how many happened. Did we get any other interested parties in picking up the patents, or did they all not have middlesex, mutualized services to figure out for the filings? Do you even have this conclusion?
How many packages we received?
No, how many were requested? We don't have that, no. There are only... There are only two, and in speaking with the gentleman at Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission who worked with me on these bids and put the proposals together and the bid documents together, these have been the only two players that they have been seeing in the marketplace in the last several months. Several banks and financial institutions will not even look at anything under $3 million. And we're only looking for financing of about $86,000.
Mr. President, may I address Ms. Yen directly?
You can ask me.
Well, Mr. President.
I will, now.
I appreciate the, being given the detail here of the bids, I'm just wondering, is the reason why municipal leasing was not awarded a bid because they didn't disclose the things that are indicated in the chart and in the agenda? In other words, no disqualifying reasons?
No, their rate, their interest rate is high, and they also had a documentation saved, which D C does not have.
So the fact that they didn't disclose the multi multiplier, the purchase option penalty, was not disqualifying?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, Ms. Yen. Transfer schedule, I forgot the resolution number. This is the biggest one we've had all year.
So number three?
Number three.
Should that transfer schedule?
Which one are you referring to?
Appendix C. Transfer, President?
No, Appendix C. The transfer schedule will.
Okay.
My question, and this is from the last school, but it is not, Mr. President, the one that ended June 30th.
Okay.
Is that right, sir?
I believe you answered yes, please. Transfer schedule is June 30th, that'll be the end. Yes.
You know, almost $1.4 million in transfers in budgetary authority, and of course, budgets that's already over, and I'm just wondering why are we doing this now? And why was it done before?
As we come to the end of the school year, this is very common to have transfers in with this type of volume, the schools, especially with a budget this size, and this is to make, make, ensure that every single individual account run, not just the broad stroke account runs, which is the first four sections of an accounting, are all in balance at the end of the year. So as we do all the final payrolls and make some additional expenditures at the end of the year, that everything is all balanced then.
Any other questions, Mr. Thomas?
Well, Mr. President, if I may, it's just that some of them seem extraordinary, such as there's a $140,000 transfer from the school special ed contract to the teaching supplies. I guess that's computer services. Is that because we're buying our computers this year, for this year's tech program for last year?
I think she answered your question satisfactorily. You asked her to answer the direct question, she gave you the direct answer. This is commonplace, you're wrapping up a year-end budget. I think that answered the question. I think any other questions are harder than that, which is be repetitive. You just ask the same question in a different fashion, is my point.
Well, I asked something quite specific, and $140,000.
Your specific question, if you'll allow me, was the number seems excessive. She just explained to you why the number is what it is. You can go item by item, but that would be duplicative, and I'm not going to sit here and go line by line on every single, it's, she just explained, it's year-end, it's commonplace, and it's done. You don't have to accept it, but we're not going to debate it.
Well, Mr. President, if I may, you know, when you do these transfers because of the budgetary authority that is needed to spend money out of these accounts, is different than that was originally approved by the Board of Education when the budget was adopted. Okay? And when you see transfers of $140,000, and that's the only one I've mentioned so far out of the dozens that are here, okay, because it sticks out, okay? That is something that tells me that that account got overspent by $140,000 during the school year, and either no one asked for a, asked for a budgetary transfer before, or it flew under the radar, no one noticed it. Or you're simply putting money that's available in for something that's really good, I don't know.
That's why we didn't audit it at the end of the year. We were obligated to do that, and that's what we audited as. Do you have any other questions?
And when I see, yes, Mr. President, I did. Mr. President, I see transfers to the judgments and settlements accounts, or account as well. I'm wondering if that reflects through the judgment or settlement of the board.
Nothing, nothing I haven't discussed, it's fire.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Which we heard on resolution items only, please. Still have more questions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. President. The addendum item approval cost proposal for GPC Inc.
Yes.
I don't know if that would give that number any.
Yes, it was.
Okay. That one.
That is number 26, Board Secretary Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Was that sent out a bid?
It wasn't sent out a bid, they're the contractor on the referendum, the referendum for the construction, it's a chamber, so that one you're allowed to bid.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, Mr. President, you changed, I had a question also about the use of the facilities, and you deleted the two I had questions about. But I'm curious, why were they deleted?
Well, because we just got that on Friday, and it was a red flag to me, being past president of the Nutley Basketball Association, which is a rec league, and being past president of the traveling basketball team, and understanding that you never seem to have enough time for the kids for practice time, I questioned where they came from, and I asked them, the board agreed to table those two for the running, and to see exactly what dates they wanted, what time they wanted, to see if they're fixing the schedule and allows the children just now to practice as well.
That was my concern as well, Mr. President, also the fact that, because it's a private outfit, I was wondering if we were getting revenue from letting them use our facility.
We'll pick that up next time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Anyone else wants to be heard on resolution items only? Seeing none, we'll move to superintendent's resolutions. Mr. Cook, if you move superintendent's resolutions number one through 23 as listed, I would appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. President. I move superintendent's resolutions one through 23 as listed.
Second, Mrs. Russo, any discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizzaro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, and I must abstain on number 20, as well, per se, to one. Mrs. Bizzaro, will you please move superintendent's addendum resolution number 24 as listed, please? President, I move resolution number 24 as written?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kuzinski, any discussion? Call the board, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, I'm all except for the communication. Oh, yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
No, we're only doing one right now. Steve's got you thrown off.
Yes. Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Dr. Reed, will you please move superintendent's addendum resolution number 25 as listed, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move addendum item number 25 as listed, superintendent's resolution.
Second, Mr. Bizzaro, second, any discussion? Please call the board.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizzaro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mrs. Russo, will you please move superintendent's addendum resolution number 26, please?
Yes, I'd like to move superintendent's addendum resolution number 26 as listed.
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cook, any discussion on that? Call the board, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
No.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo? Yes. Mr. Sodda?
No, and I want to make note that it's no reflection on Mr. Fancher, it's for other reasons.
Mrs. Bizzaro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, will you please move superintendent's addendum resolution number 27 as listed, please?
Sir, I move resolution number 27.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cook, please. Call the board, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizzaro?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Sodda, would you please move superintendent's addendum resolution number 28, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move resolution superintendent number 28, so move.
Second, Mr. Kuzinski, any discussion? Please call the board.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, will you please move Board Secretary's Resolution number one through number 25 as listed, please?
Sir, I move Board Secretary's Resolutions number one through 25, so.
Second, Mr. Bizzaro, any discussion on those?
Mr. President, it says they, as they already have amended.
I'm sorry, as amended, you're correct.
As amended, correct, that's why I discussed that, for a classification. Any other discussion? Mrs. Russo.
Question on number two travelers for the convention to the same person as a law on a own person's travel.
Okay, the ruling is we can vote on it, even though, even though it pertains to us, it's what we're going.
There's rule of human compliance with the regulations.
So if we don't, if we don't vote on it, we can't pass it, so we, your rule necessaries the exception. Thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the board.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, all with the exception of our communication.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizzaro?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. Oh, yes, thank you, President. I would like to ask Mr. Rogers to please read Board Secretary's addendum resolution number 26, please.
Approval of cost proposal, GPC Incorporated. They've resolved that the Nutley Board of Education approves a cost proposal from GPC Incorporated in the amount of $26,082 for servicing the asphalt on the near parking lot and driveway entrance to spring door at school's.
Second, Mr. Kuzinski, here, discussion?
Outstanding idea. I'm glad we took the time to do that additional thing.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, call the board, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sodda?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Regulations allow 30 minutes for this communication. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and as we stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me, and signals, files, or length. Yes, ma'am.
Terry Cook, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Paranormal Services Network. I, first of all, Mr. Sodda, you deserve a very peaceful retirement. I know I am one of the people that have made it not so easy for you, but I really, I just wanted to extend my thanks for your work, and your understanding, and I really, you deserve a peaceful and healthy retirement.
Thank you.
I'm not going to let you have it to the end of the year.
I might, I just might.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, I'm so excited to hear about all the schools, and that's really great, and especially that I just passed spring boarding the other day, and it'll be very great to see what people did, and to hear that Washington School is completely done, that'll be terrific, especially those, I love those front windows, they're, yeah, they're.
Thank you.
Anyway, I just wanted to, I know that I had given you oral a letter for you to kind of think about. I do have some letters for the, for the public, if they'd like to see them. Basically, it's, it's some information that I got from my home district in regards to guidelines that we use for hiring people. We have found in the last three years that we've been doing negotiations between ourselves and the Board of Ed, that it's been very successful in bringing people onto the salary guide as to where the actual positions that they, or the salaries that they should be made. The question that we do have is that we just want to make sure that people are getting the fair amount. So, you know, somebody could say to me, well, why are you coming up, you know, you're not representing the teachers, and we're not, because they have their own representation. But we are also aware of the fact that budgeting issues are always here, and we're always worried about money. And if we find ourselves in a situation where we're hiring people at higher steps, then that depletes the funding that we do have for other teachers, and there is always a need for another teacher in another classroom, as you saw, trying to get the kindergarten program up and running. So one of the things that we have found very successful is when we do hire people, the superintendent keeps within the guidelines of 5% over the last paycheck that they've had in their last position. And as an association, we do reserve the rights to go into and meet with the superintendent and find out what that actual pace that was, so that we know that that person is being paid within that pay frame. Just so, because like I said, it's just something that is very concerning, especially because when you do deplete your money, we start looking at other positions that I'm understanding are not being replaced.
Understanding.
So, I just want to say one thing, one more thing, and then I'll sit down, I promise. And I just have to say this, it was my understanding that a few months ago, two people who have worked many, many years in, in the high school as English teachers retired, and they, from what I understand, by looking and checking out everything, like everyone else is, I understand that only one position was replaced. And that is a concern, because I know that the other person that worked there was there for an entire day, working six periods, which means that she had at least 25 kids in her class, and that's six times 25, the last time I looked, is 150. So I worry about kids not getting what they do, the need, and how does that affect the kids that are specialized in their inclusionary classes? And because now you start to see, to wonder, like, are the least restrictive environments, or is that what's happening there? You know, it's a domino effect, education is all about dominos. So I just want you to keep that in mind, and if you can just keep this entire situation in mind, and just to keep that.
We're certainly acutely aware of each and every personnel decision that's been made over the last three months.
Okay.
To put this district back together, again, after we found out in June that we lost $3.2 million.
Mm-hmm.
And it's been a painstaking process, and, you know, the staff has really stepped it up at the high school, you know, the, the English coordinator is going to be assuming classes where she didn't have classes prior, other teachers who had prep school now classes there. So. So there's been minimal classroom size change in that department. Now, that's not to dismiss our concern for you, for your concern in that department. Concern is great, it just came out of, you know, circumstance about school. The principal and staff is going to get a great job at the, brings him to compliance. And we understand it's not just English, it's English, it's language, it's arts, it's history. It's, and whether it's the high school, the middle school, the elementary levels, everything concerns us, so, but I appreciate your concern. Anyone else wish to?
Mr. Corcoran, can I say something to you, Mr. Corcoran?
You can say something, new business or old business, but we don't, for that, we're in this portion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alan Thomas, 108 Kennedy Street. Mr. President, I saw that I rarely see you at the Nubly Board of Education meeting. Somebody voted no on one of your resolutions, and I was wondering if we could get a public explanation from those board members on what those, why they voted no.
I think June's the open session, certainly open to discussing.
During what sessions?
New business. But this is certainly not the appropriate time for that discussion to be had.
Well, I'm asking you, Mr. President, do you know the reasons for their votes?
They can speak for themselves, I don't pretend to speak for them. They can speak for those, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, uh, the occasion drive past Washington School for the first time in many months recently. And when I went by, I almost hit the car next to me, because I did not recognize Washington School. I think it was so wonderful, and so, I thought it was a new building.
Thank you so much.
It looks wonderful. And I too would like to congratulate Mrs. Zara on well-earned retirement. But I'll say something more in June, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Because until then, I still plan to be a pest, so.
And next year, I'm going to sit next to you.
Right next to you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Anyone else wish to be heard, and, and, seeing none, move to new business. Anyone with new business?
Yes, Mr. President, a couple of questions. We, last year, or over the last couple of years, I found a couple of conflicts when it comes to our calendar towards the election time of the year, between the town of Nutley and between the Board of Education. I was hoping that we could approach someone from the town of Nutley and someone from our Board of Education to have a clear calendar of events. That, you know, as elected officials, sometimes where we are expected to be at functions, and when we're not there, we're taken to task, because we didn't show up. But if we don't know about it, which happened quite a few times last year, it happened a couple of times last year, it's a little embarrassing. Secondly, I know for a fact we had some PTO minis that were the same night. We found ourselves as board members trying to represent our community, having to go from Garfield to another part of New Jersey. If there's some way we could, and I've spoken to Mrs. James about it, maybe setting up someone in our district that could run a Google Calendar that would benefit the town of Nutley and the Board of Education. I'd like to somehow discuss that or work on it.
That's a great point, and one of the topics that Mr. Scuzzado and I have addressed with the commissioners as far as the joint services is that issue is a topic of the calendar. We actually have spoken to Mr. Carino, who runs their website, as you know, he's come here several times and given, uh, given us information on our website and linking the two calendars together. Definitely needs to be done, we're working on it.
My other question is specifically to Mrs. Corcoran. How many, how many people do you represent, since you present yourself as the president of the Charles Advocacy Group in Nutley? How many people are you the president of?
Well, it's revolving, it's revolving. We do have, we have about twenty-five members, thirty members, but it's revolving. When parents need us, they come to us. And like I said, when I asked that question in regards to that particular person, I just had a question from a parent about an OT service, because lots of our parents have special needs children. And they come to me and they'll say, do you know about this person? And they know that I'm here, so that's what I'm saying, that I just want to clarify, you know, clarify.
I certainly applaud that part of your argument. In my personal opinion, when you send me a letter, you put a letter on my desk, that tends to question the superintendent's authority, which this letter does, in my opinion. I find you to be a hypocrite. I find you to be more self-serving than the president of the advocacy group. You're saying, you're making some quotes in here and questioning the superintendent's appointment, questioning his salary, the steps that he put him on. At the same time, you're telling him what a great, forgetting about him. I don't think that the letter warrants even responding to him. But I feel, I just feel a little taken back when you get up here and tell the administrators what a great job you're doing, and then in retrospect, you send a letter, and for me, you can save your, you can save the paper. Don't give me another letter, questioning the superintendent's. Excuse me, I'm not, excuse me, I'm not, don't bother giving me another letter, questioning the superintendent's authority.
Well, sir, first of all, I'm a citizen and a taxpayer of this town.
You pose yourself as the president of the.
Please let it finish.
Excuse me.
Please let it finish.
And that letter was reflective of how other people who have come to me and members of my organization and have spoken to me about how they feel. They have a right to be heard, sir.
They do.
You may not want to hear what they have to say, but they have a right. And I just want to clarify one thing. If I have a disagreement with Mr. Zara about something at that podium or on that piece of paper, that has nothing to do with about how I feel about him as a person. I happen to like Mr. Zara, so I do wish him well. So I just, I take offense to the fact that you're not happy with that, okay? But that doesn't mean that I can't not give you information. I'm not holding back anything.
You certainly have that right, there's no.
If you don't want anything else from me, sir, you won't get anything.
But you questioned the superintendent.
And I'm allowed to, sir, I am a parent and a taxpayer.
Let's keep it simple.
Taxpayer, thank you.
You're making the statement, you're answering the statement. Any other questions, Mr. Kuzinski?
Anyone else?
I have a couple of issues I want to bring up. First of all, the people in this district, I'm talking about the hard-working teachers, the staff members, and principals, which I wish to emphasize, every single principal. I believe they are people of integrity, that they work hard for this district, and I believe that this Board of Education has done a superb job in making sure that there are checks and balances so that people will do their job according to law. I will speak for myself. As a member of this Board of Education, I believe, based on what I have seen and heard from the people who work in this district and who are the shareholders in this district, who are our parents in the PTOs and the taxpayers, that every single teacher in this district, including principals, and I will underscore the word principals, are people with impeccable integrity and look out for the best interests of our students, in my opinion. Now, I'll move on, Mr. President. One thing, Mr. President, that I have to, well, I have to come in here for a few things. Unbeknown to the citizens of this township, because you wouldn't know, because you're not up at six o'clock in the morning, like many of us are, traveling around town, Ken Riley has been at just about every single school, every single day of the year, and every single day during the summer. As president of the board, Ken, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but this needs to be said, he's had a passion to see to it that this school district is up and running by September eight. Mr. Kuzinski called me the other day, very early in the morning, and he said, Steve, why don't you stop by, we'll take a look at things? And we did. I know Mrs. Russo's been there, I know Mr. Sodda, I know all of these board members have taken a very personal interest in this district. But Ken, I wanted to kind of focus on you, because I've seen you there every morning patrolling around. And I thank you for taking that initiative and that sincere approach. Takes leadership, folks, takes leadership to get the job done. Now, Mr. Riley, when you became president, you had love and passion, and I'm going to ask that we proceed with this beginning this week. You have suggested that we begin to develop a program where we would proceed with shared services with the township of Nutley. So I'm asking the Board of Education tonight, particularly you, Mr. Riley, that we consider setting up a workshop, a brainstorming workshop, all of us, with the Board of Commissioners, to discuss how we can develop goals, objectives, and a strategic plan with specific objectives as to where we can share services, and then establish dates of completion. We all want to do it, I know the commissioners want to do it, I know you want to do it, but I'm asking this board, full board, all nine of us, to meet with the five commissioners at some point in the near future, so that we can brainstorm this and get the ball rolling.
I'd certainly be happy to request that. Having done this now in my sixth year, the reason that I appointed both myself and Mr. Scuzzado as liaisons in meeting with commissioners in shared services, and I think we've done a pretty good job already in a short period of time, in fact, that we're working on grants together, and we're working with the Parks Department, and we're working with Dr. Scorpelli, with shared services with his department. It's extraordinarily difficult to get everybody together. And that's why right now we have a small group, and I will pass the word, I think it's a great idea, I'd love to have all of us sit down. I just think it's just extraordinarily difficult to get everybody together. It's tough enough to get two commissioners together, never mind five of them together and nine board members, but I appreciate it, and I will make that attempt.
Thank you, and what a word. I'll kind of smile a little, because the word difficulty is not in your vocabulary.
No, I believe it.
You seem to get things done, so appreciate it. Now, bear with me on this. From time to time, we get letters from parents, and I'm not going to get into the specifics of this letter, but it's an issue that concerns some people and concerns me, and I just want this board to consider something, particularly the academic committee, Mr. Reed, and Mr. Scuzzado, the policy committee. I'm requesting for consideration of the Policy and Academic Committee to explore the possibility of changing our school admission policy to include an amendment which would enable the Board of Education to waiver the age and cutoff date of admission to kindergarten for certain students who demonstrate advanced skills and learning abilities. Now, there's always the question, when you read the law, that children are entitled to free and appropriate education. What does appropriate mean? Well, I believe that appropriate should be determined by independent professional testing, but also the will of the parents, not what antiquated hardfast policies dictate. And have you, I'm not talking about Nutley policies, I'm primarily talking about the state and federal policies that many times we are guided by. But ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board, times have changed. In this age of information and technology, I'm sure that the ability of a child to increase his or her intellectual capacity is far greater than at any other time in the history of this nation. I understand that there are many arguments against changing such a policy, and most of those arguments are legitimate. They deal with financial considerations and growing classroom space. But I am of the opinion that the insistence of government, that it knows more about raising children than the parents do, has done a more injustice, and it has been a hindrance rather than an encouragement to advancing policies designed to meet the needs of the 21st century child. So I'm asking the Policy Committee, Mr. Scuzzado, and the Academic Committee, Mr. Reed, that you really research this issue, and you do ask parents of some of these very gifted children to come before your committee and to state their case, and then act accordingly. Mr. President, I thank you for the time.
Well, I have another idea. I would prefer, along the same lines, to have an open discussion with both parents and the full board and principals at the elementary level who would be responsible for assuming those children into their curriculum in their buildings. And maybe the next, not the next regular meeting, but maybe the conference meeting, we can make that happen and have an open invitation to parents who would like to see that happen. Obviously, it's, you know, there's, two schools have fought on that. I'm just going to tell you of a parent, for whatever this is worth, it's, you know, we'll have more dialogue and we'll have more meetings. But as a parent of a child who fit that criteria, and in the old days, we talk about the old days, they used to call them the Iowa tests. And my son, who we moved in early, as you're requesting here, scored a ninety-nine, which is in the top one percentile, in grades one through six. So he was among the brightest in the country at that level and at that age. And unfortunately for him, when he hit the middle school, it caught up to him. And, and I don't know, they tell me that girls are different than boys, and they're more mature, and they handle studies better. But he, I will say publicly on camera, if he doesn't watch this, but he had some difficulty when he hit the middle school, and I think it was based on his age. There are two schools that thought, that's why I would love to have the administrators here, because I asked most teachers back then, when he had difficulty in the middle school. And he went on, by the way, to correct himself, he had a great career in high school and college. But he faltered at that thirteen, fourteen-year-old age, and they said, they said that it's because we moved him ahead and we should have held him back. So there's definitely two schools that thought, and I would love to dig into it at the next meeting, so.
I'd have to agree with you, I think you have to consider a lot more than just the mental ability and academics. I mean, you have to be concerned about social and physical adjustment, too. It involves athletics and social interaction. To make this whole thing very subjective, I don't know if that's such a good idea, to be honest with you. That's just my.
I think it's a good idea to have a meeting and let everybody be heard. I think it's a different one to be able to, Mr. Mascareto. Mr. Mascareto.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, because I had made a copy of the policy this morning in reviewing the letter that we received, and it was dated August the second. It is policy. Contrary to what the letter means you believe, it's not. But it is a policy set forth by the board. The only consideration that I like to be given is counsel to look at the bottom of Policy 5112 on page two, and refers to the administrative code and the NJSA. I'd like to fold your copy of those statutes to see if they are consistent with what policy.
Anyone else, Mr. Kuzinski?
I would just hope that you include educators, and I know you're discussing that, but they're certainly important, because I wouldn't want to find ourselves in that type of a position, making those decisions without the educators fully involved.
Appreciate that. Anyone else?
I guess on the new business, I spoke with Mr. Rogers regarding his article in the, not the journal, regarding bullying. I was asking if Steve can clarify to us the, what that article was about, and then also hopefully we can discuss on our meeting with policy on that.
It feels like I revisit this every so often, but this is no harm in clarifying something. The issue that I brought before the public has nothing to do with the Nubly Board of Education. It will eventually. But, look, there's no secret that I have a national audience, none at all. You know, I remember some time ago, when I made some statements about issues, that the news media picked it up. Because I'm on a lot of these stations, I do a lot of work in there. But the bullying issue is something that is a state issue and a national problem. So I brought that up. I brought it up to a couple of assemblymen who are meeting this week, not as a representative of the school board. As a matter of fact, Mr. Pomaco, who can probably, I'm sure will attest to this tonight, he's here, I made it absolutely clear that when I speak on any issues, whether they be law enforcement or educational, and in some cases military issues, because I'm still involved with them, I speak on behalf of myself. The only spokesman for this school board is dictated by the superintendent and the school board president. So, Mr. Scuzzado, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Nubly School Board. I've made that very clear. On many of the programs that I go on regarding issues even like bullying on television, there are disclaimers before and after those broadcasts. Now, saying that. Now, saying that, Mr. Sazado did speak with me earlier, and I think it's a great idea that hopefully the Policy Committee could jump on board. I'd be more than glad, after I meet with the assemblyman, Mr. President, to bring a report to the school board. I'll tell you what, Mr. Sazado, I have a pretty good idea. It'd be great if this school board or this district could develop a model policy for the rest of the nation to follow. But it is a problem, and it's something we have to address. So I'm not representing the Nutley School District, I'm representing me.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. President?
Regarding the extended day program, I'd like to have a discussion about the feasibility of expanding this program to include the month of August, as well as February and April breaks and other school holidays. One year ago, we were told we were unable to open this program during this time, as school wasn't in session then. I now find out we are able to do so as long as we change the name of the program to Camp and do not need to be licensed as a daycare provider. There is a need for this, for the working parents of this district, as I am one of them, and most of us do not get seven or eight weeks of vacation per year. It would also be beneficial to the students enrolled, for the sake of continuity, to remain in the same program and not have their schedules disrupted, as parents struggle with finding alternate childcare arrangements. And when managed effectively, it is advantageous to the district by adding positive cash flow. So I'd like to hear the opinion of the administration, as well as the rest of the board, and if we can move forward, how soon we can move forward with that.
Mr. Sazado?
Yes. We were always directed that, as existed, it's an extended day program, so simply when school is not in session, the program cannot be in session. If, and we'll have to run this by council, but if in fact it requires a title change and then there's availability, I'm very mindful of the concerns that working parents have for childcare. And I don't know if our schools are done, we're finished with construction, that's also one concern that's been eliminated. We had, as Mr. Riley said earlier in the evening, construction every school, which really critiqued our activities. So perhaps it's the right time to discuss this, and if the board so chooses, and we listen to all concerns, whatever my recommendation may be, that if it gets put in place for this coming school year, if it can be done.
Any legal opinion on, as far as what Mr. Sazado is referring to? Mrs. Russo's saying Camp and...
I think that because it's an underscore program, I think there are some other aspects to it that will have to be examined from a legal perspective. And I would suggest, if you're going to contemplate, if you're seriously going to contemplate enlarging the program, broadening the program, that you get to be involved from a legal standpoint. I don't know all the issues at this moment, but I certainly speculate that there are things that have to be complied with, including the nature of that program.
Yeah, it's certainly hard to comment on it, we don't have the legal and financial background for this program, but I could speak for everybody, but I don't think there's anybody here that's against that program, Mr. Sazado?
No, just for some clarity, that's all. So now we're looking to take this extended day program and the Thanksgiving break, for example, that program would continue into that Thanksgiving break, summer break, Christmas break, is that what we're looking for?
Yeah, I think right now, they have to go to Parks and Recreation, right, to that program?
Yeah. I have known that the legal holidays, we, we, not only open, but specifically February and April breaks.
School breaks.
Maybe sometime.
And the month of August, correct?
Pardon me?
And the month of August as well?
And the month of August. We did originally go in two or three weeks into the month of August.
We cut down, we cut down on our summer programs.
Okay.
Anyone else?
That's at the expense of the parents, correct?
Yes.
And now, we did have this before, and we pulled it back?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
When, how long ago did?
Last year.
Was it last year, two years ago?
It was a year, I think.
A couple of years ago, because of legal issues.
Ken wasn't here.
It was that year.
And it was legal issues that caused us to pull back, because it was extended day, and if you don't have school, then what are you extending? So that was the reason we pulled back.
There were insurance issues, there were staffing issues, there were questions about having it run while school is not in session, so it is not a simple issue. It is an issue that has to be looked at closely. And the other thing, if I recall, I think we may have taken a director that made it a ten-month position instead of a twelve-month position just recently also, which is another consideration.
Is there anyone here who does not want counsel to move forward and give a legal opinion on this? Let's, I appreciate that, Mrs. Russo. Anyone else, if you have business, because I say old business for instance, I'll publish your current, yes, Mr. Sazado?
Well, I hate to repeat myself, I guess it's a problem I've developed in teaching all those years ago. I want to respond to a couple of things that you wrote in this letter. It says here, I saw on a list of names, personnel who shared the same last names as influential people in this town, since they were sons and daughters of these people, and you're talking about nepotism. I recognize a lot of the names too, and the reason I recognize them is that they were students of mine or of my wife's, and they had been graduates of the Nutley school system. And then you went on to define nepotism as favoritism shown to relatives, especially in securing jobs. Well, I don't know about relatives, but as I said last time, I think it's good that we hire people that are our products, because it shows that we have faith in them, and most of them are good products and well-deserving of the jobs. I don't think it's nepotism, to be honest with you. That's one thing. Secondly, I'd like to bring up this topic again, I brought it up before and it wasn't well-received, but let me say it again. I would like to look into possibly developing some kind of program on Saturday possibly for parents that are interested in getting some help in helping their children to learn. I think we could do this, maybe we could charge a small fee, if we could get enough interested parents to attend these sessions and have teachers come in and give the parents the facilities and the capabilities of helping their students with their homework and with their studies. I think it would go a long way to improving our product, so to speak. And this is not just my idea, I've seen it on the internet where it's been developed in several other communities and very successfully, and I would like to see us look into this.
So why don't we just, does anybody have an issue? If we just put a questionnaire on our website, if any parents would be interested in such a program?
That would be...
Someone else? We'll go on the website, and then we can take that to the next level, which is maybe having a handout for all the open houses in September, when the parents, that's when they get the majority from there, and maybe they can throw that out at that time and submit that.
Right. We get no response, then? We get no response, but I think we owe it to ourselves to try.
That's fair enough, Mr. Reed.
I'm co-sharing the academic committee, I'd be more than amenable to work with you on that wall. It's very viable.
I understand. Anyone else? Mr. Mascarotol?
Well, no, one more thing before noon.
No, that's all.
That's all. We're...
I'm not old.
We're noon. I know he's old.
That was old, that was old business.
He's old. I just want to make a comment, because someone said about the, I know Steve and Wall had a lot about the state mandates, and just for the record, I want to know that some of them, Scolari, I've been in contact with him, he is working on alleviating some of them, that we might believe are unnecessary, or some that are putting burdens on us. Some of them, Scolari, has been working on, I spoke, I've been speaking with them on it, so I want you to know that we do have something going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mascarotol, it's with old business.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I wanted to just give a little update regarding Nutley School Security Project in peace, and this will continue as it develops further.
And this is one of the shared services that...
Well, one of the heels of what Mr. Rogers has stated. Before I read this is that recently I met with Commissioner Evans, and I have met and spoken to all of the commissioners regarding this specific project. So we have gone on the road for a true shared service that will benefit the township and the district. As we all know, the Nutley School District recently completed a secure-out school grant. Upon its approval, this matching grant will allow the district to utilize one hundred thousand dollars of dedicated funds from our security budget. By doing this, the school district will receive a one hundred thousand dollar match that will solely be used for the completion of the John Walker Middle School Security Plan. As some of you remember, the oh-six referendum was drafted, and the John Walker Middle School was excluded, preventing any use of the oh-six referendum money that were used for the overall security project. While developing the scope of this project, it became apparent that the school district could assist the township by sharing the cost of fiber optics, which is referred to as dark fiber, that would set the stage for the development of an overall technology plan which would bridge the township and the Board of Education. Additional benefits of this project will be discussed throughout my plan. I wanted just to commend Millennium Strategies, Ms. Givone, along with Commissioner Patracco, the Nutley Police Department, Republic Safety, for bringing this grant to our attention. This will now allow the district the opportunity to complete the Walker Middle School Plan, which the oh-six referendum failed to provide. Without this grant, it would be impossible for the Board of Education to be able to complete the final segment of the overall security project. Now, just one quick part about the phases, there are four phases with this project, which I'm making the presentation for, but not all tonight. But once phase one has been completed, the school district will now embark on the beginning of a shared service partnership, which will provide considerable cost savings to the district and to the township of Nutley, which is particularly important, these financially uncertain times. The overall plan and scope of the project will be divided into four phases, which will be discussed as it further develops. But initially, if the grant is approved, the middle school will be completed, and then will be able for us to move ahead and work with the town, which I've gotten the commitment from them, to put the fiber optics, to link the buildings from public safety to town hall to the library to the Nutley High School, completing the link. And that will start to eliminate certain services that the township pays for, which we'll no longer have to absorb that cost. And as the phases continue, which I will give you a better update in some weeks to come, we'll show you the overall plan and exactly how much money this will save. This is truly a shared service, that is real dollars in real time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mascarotol. I know you've put a tremendous amount of time into putting that plan together, along with Ms. Givone, and the creation of these people, so thank you very much. Anyone else for old business?
Mr. President, one more thing about saving tax dollars, and it's something we don't hear, because it's one of those awesome hero jobs. Mr. President, Mr. Ferrara, our school security officer, has worked diligently this past year, and he does this every year, folks, every year, it's a difficult job, in screening out individuals who come to this district, who want to come to this district, that do not live in the township or the county. And I can't begin to tell you the amount of money, the amount of tax dollars that is being saved by the work that he's doing. And it's important for the taxpayers to know this, because we do spend a lot of money, but we get a big return on this investment, so I thought it was important for this board to know that the work that he's doing is certainly bearing a lot of fruit for the taxpayers of this district.
Thank you very much. Any other old business?
Are we, we had talked about this before, are we going to pursue the company Millennium to look, or a company to look at our...
Well, right now, it's part of the shared services that everybody's talking about, Mr. Sazado and I are, have been having discussions with that.
We haven't brought anybody on board yet for the...
That's right. But she continues to work on our behalf with two grants that we're working on, but thank you for the question. Any other old business? Yes, Mr. Rogers?
President, this is with respect to the Policy Committee, I'm working on changing, it's a simple change, I believe, but to reinstate as permanent committees the Personnel Committee and the Academic Committee.
Yeah, good point.
We're at it right now, and we need to...
We have to change the policy that states, we have a policy which lists all of our committees, which changes all the time, in the president's wishes, and then since we've added this technology and academics back in, personnel, we need to change our policy. Thank you very much. So if your next meeting, if that, and this game is, if you could make that change, we appreciate it, so we can improve the first meeting at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I appreciate that. Good job. Seeing no other business, though, here, motion to adjourn. Mr. Sazado, thank you all.